It's like I got a pit help retreat. It's like some of those little carpet out there.
Did you ever get that requested?
Yeah.
Why two or three times today?
Oh, really? Oh, well. I had Dan calling me this morning. Putting us up actually.
Okay.
Hanging out the fax machine.
Yes.
My fax machine last week. Say receiving fax and nothing ever come out.
Yeah, she said she sent it last week and then she ended up calling Nancy today yesterday. She said she could've been ahold of you, so.
Yeah, when we're done with Dan's office, I'm on two restricted calls. That's Sarah calling me up. She's about to cry.
So what is the high more supposed to be?
Twenty-seven.
The high.
Okay, see my phone is so.
Could you send me a six?
Seventeen tonight. Right now.
Yeah.
Because I thought she mentioned it. She was up on the wall. So I actually. Fax is still last week. You have your phone set in Tulsa?
Yeah. Well, that was Vegas.
No, we faxed.
Okay, we'll call the meeting in order. We've had some items requested, additional items. One being, review the policy on showing movies. Review or discuss the tardy policy. And Larry Leiter would like to address the board with the, in regards to awards. The National Awards FFA proceed. Are there any other additions or additions to the agenda?
I'd like to talk about our waiting policy a little bit too.
Do we have a policy on the junior high usage or is that just all rhetoric?
No, we don't have a policy.
Just question.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to add the use of private video cameras in here. If we just talk about it.
Anything else? Okay, consent agenda. Any questions? You got South Coast Plain Service Center, is that one of them? Can all that go to Romans or?
None of them. It just happened, both of them came in for our board meeting this time. Usually they send them once a month, but they were like hitting this one out. And the second came what was supposed to be, so I just figured.
What's up? Uh, maybe six days, seven, twice.
I think it's eight days.
Eight days.
Yeah. Yeah, one day.
I've seen the other ones, yeah.
On the city of Hill Cityville, that's the junior senior high annex football field and F. What's F?
Is it football field?
That one, right?
There's more description on it than.
That's all right.
Than print.
Let me see.
Maybe it's just football field.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm thinking. I tried to bring it in. Yeah, that's what it is.
And then we have a high school activity from the road outcomes out there. It's like, what are we, uh, like duty found, uh, entries, officials, primarily, um, on the activities funded by the high schools at.
Medals and awards, um, yeah. Officials, entry fees for any activity that we go to. And that's where all the entry fees, like when we host tournaments, entry fees that we receive go into the activities account.
It's like gate receipts going up.
Gate receipts go into the activity account to help offset. I mean, like when we host tournaments and stuff, we don't always get reimbursed for everything that hospitality rooms and things like that. So we'll use that as well sometimes.
Okay, any other questions?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move this second. Sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Communications, um, those minutes from the past site council meeting. Yep, certainly.
I saw we had a real good site council meeting, some good ideas came out of it. One of the things I thought that really was a good, good thing is we've been having, we were having issues with when preschool parents would bring their kids and drop them off in the morning, they'd all park out in front of the high school. So as other parents would come to drop their kids off, there was nowhere to park. So talked to Kay about it and we opened the north door so those preschool parents can come in, drop their kids off, pick them up at the north door. But we do have a teacher or a parlayer and then as soon as that time is over, we lock the door. It's locked for the rest of the day. So that helped relieve that front issue a little bit. So that, that was a good idea. Uh, the playground, which is something the board, uh, really didn't approve the playground, but the architect working on it. And this is just a first, first idea at it. And I mean, there's some issues here that I haven't got back with him about that isn't going to be, uh, I don't think. And that's like the way he has to travel here with the car and bus. We, we don't want to miss car and buses for sure. So that's going to be a tough thing. Couple of things he, he had in, and we didn't really talk about this, but what we talked about at our meeting was trying to, um, petition off somehow around the play equipment so that we don't have such a large area of pea gravel. And then we talked about maybe trying to find some used astroturf or something like that and put in around them. But he had put in here a four-foot concrete slab around each piece of equipment. I'm not sure if that's a good thing or not. But we're also working with Joe Ryan out of Smoky Hill Service Center in Salina, who's a playground person. So he, he hasn't responded to this either. So that'd be a question we'd have. Another thing we talked about is trying to get rid of some of the severe slope we have and look at the drainage issues. Now, if you can see on this, we're kind of looking at a two-tier playground where the slope at the top would be less. Then we'd have a retaining wall basically, and then a slope more at the bottom that would be less severe. So we can get a more flat basketball area. Another thing we also talked about was adding some seating out there. And you see he had a lot of seating, probably more than you probably want to have. But, um, so that's an issue we'll talk about. But I did, I did tell him it'd be nice to have some benches and maybe some tables for parents or on weekends if they want to come watch their kid or, you know, uh, just kids to sit around and talk out there too. They kind of like to do that. So, um, and then you see on that, this is just a first idea. Uh, you see there, we'd have an ADA ramp. So they'd be ADA accessible to the bottom level and then also steps there. Uh, two ramps actually, going both directions. And then we would relocate the equipment that's in the far north corner, that's kind of around the corner of the building. Want to try and relocate some of that stuff so that we, we'd be able to, I guess, better, uh, better see where the kids are, you know, a little bit more.
Doesn't some of that have to be sectioned off for the head chart?
Well, we would move their equipment that they have. Where, there, that old wooden thing that we have, we'd pull that out because it's pretty dilapidated. So we'd pull that out. Then there's another piece of equipment that we took all the slides and everything off of last year because of, of a safety issue. So we'd pull that out and kind of move things a little bit. The only thing that we would look at would probably be taking out the merry-go-round. Not supposed to really have those anymore. And try and replace that with a large piece of equipment. Okay? Ninety percent of our, uh, behavior issues on the, on the playground is the merry-go-round. Try and get twenty-five or thirty kids on there at one time. But that would come out and, you know, we'd probably look at a large play system type thing for the older kids. Something that would be more there, maybe some climbing ropes or a little climbing wall or something that would be a little bit more in the older part. And then we would relocate some of the, all the teeter-potters and some of the swings and all that kind of stuff. That's the first idea. It's just an idea. So, uh, the other thing that I had him look at was, and you'll see on this big sheet, uh, this little hyphenated square over here, that entryway. An issue we have there with kids coming in and out is that it's, it's an L shape around the door. So the kids either have to jump over the wall or walk around and it's kind of confined. So I asked him to look at the possibility of opening, opening that up a little bit. And that's what those other two pages show. If you look there, uh, on this one, it shows the door would be open, you'd just go straight into the door. Rather than right now, we have kind of a brick ledge coming around in front of that door. And there's about, I would guess, five, maybe six feet between the door and that ledge. So there's an issue. Um, the reason I had him look at that is because a lot of those bricks are falling apart and the, the, it's not in very good condition. And also the onyx above the door itself is not in really good condition. So like it may be replacing that and opening that entryway up just a little bit more. And then the next page, it shows kind of a top view of what that would look like, uh, with having some concrete bench seating there and, uh, direct access to in and out the door rather than having to go around a wall. We would be able to do that with changing the, uh, go controlling the water flow a little bit. That's why that was done that way.
That's what I wondered.
But if we, if we get our slopes right and everything, we should be able to bring that up a little bit and make that a little more accessible. So that's a first idea. Plan to have the site council be involved, get some of the teachers involved and maybe look at some other possibilities, so. If you have any ideas, you can email them to me or give me a call.
What is the surface of this projected?
Well, he put in asphalt personally. I would, if we get this far, I, you know, cost comparison, of course, I know that's an issue. But everywhere that's kind of a beige color, pink, that's asphalt. Everywhere that's white would be concrete on his drawing.
And what's the black?
The black is the play area.
Pea gravel.
The gravel.
You can't use the, um, tire, correct?
Yeah, we can. We may do that.
Instead of the pea gravel, I mean, I like that stuff up there in the city, but some people, that's the tire, you know, the recycled tire.
The recycled tire would probably be a heck of a lot better than the pea gravel. The, the re, the thing we run into, that, that's a lot of area and to remove all the pea gravel and fill it with recycled tire. Um, I think, I, I can't say for absolute positive, but I think you have to have eight inches of that recycled tire.
With a black part at the bottom and then that, yeah. I just didn't know if, um.
Another thing we kicked around a little bit, and I don't know, if we are able to section off these play areas, we might be able to go with maybe a rubberized surface inside, you know, rather than a pea gravel or a recycled tire. So that way that would eliminate all that extra stuff, bringing in the building and clothes and everything else.
There was a lady that got a grant for that. She got a grant for the whole thing. Vera Garrison did a grant for all of the parts. Got the equipment and everything. So I didn't know if that was a possibility. She could find one maybe for the school playground.
I've looked in the past and typically right at the very beginning, it says K-12 education is not qualified.
Of course not. Our kids are getting back, you know, wanting to get them.
Tax community, I guess. But I can still, I mean, we can still look and see if anything's out.
Do you want to give part of the playground to the city?
No.
This is just the first, first idea. I mean, you know, we'll look at it again. One thing I thought of after the fact, and I don't know, is over here where he has this future school community garden area. Uh, if we have like a, if we would put like a pergola or something up there with some benches under it, you know, to, that kind of thing. Yeah, that sounds good.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah. That's why I said the master gardener.
Gets a hundred and fifty.
But if you have any ideas, please don't be hesitant to share them with us so we can.
Is this the only thing up for discussion at this point?
This is the only thing the board has approved at this point from last year as far as architect working on it.
Okay, any other, any other questions on that or discussion? Right, so we're going to legislative luncheon?
Just a reminder that legislative luncheon is at fourteenth. Um, I know it's during the week and it's tough to get off and whatnot. Certainly you responded and aren't able to go, but if something happens and you can't at the last minute, we're going to run. So if something, um, that's all I have on that really.
Okay. Strategic planning, I think there was, I missed something in there.
Uh, Gary sent a tentative, I guess, agenda as to kind of what might happen day one and day two. Just thought I would apply in the packet and see this by end of the day. So just to give you an idea of, um, kind of what the proceeding would be.
Here is a list, uh, forgive me for some of the typos. I figured them out after I printed it and I wasn't going to reprint it. But, uh, this is a list that, uh, that Kathy and Tommy and I come up with. Uh, what we did, we put together our list of ideas. I took off first the ones that was on all the lists and then I took off the ones that was on two lists. And, um, I called everybody and this is what I've got so far. Uh, we've got, I think there's eight that have committed. Um, there was three that was really interested but could only be there the first night. And I told them if they show up, I didn't think that would, you know, if they had something to input and that would be great. And then there's some that I've had her back on, so.
And what do they do?
They are the community members that, that they had requested.
We have to get, what do we, how many will that give us then?
Well, we were shooting for ten and, um.
But I mean, for total, to attend these meetings.
Oh, should've been around thirty, right?
I think you're going to need a few more.
Well, that's what, that's, that's the other reason why I brought the list. Um, yeah, we are going to be short based on this. We was hoping to get ten for sure.
What about the site council, okay?
Well, I took, I didn't include anybody that was already on a, a list.
Is this the one you wanted?
Like Jill?
Ed or, Ed or Moody and I talked to him about the meeting. Someone said they were interested. I just got to get back and find out for sure if they're coming or not.
No, no one on the city could. That's their thing. The city would have been represented, but they, that's their council. And so they was out, Dennis couldn't the Friday either, so they was out. Uh, Todd, uh, did I get, yeah. Commissioners wanted Todd to represent them. And at this point, if we've got some other ideas we want to call, we can, you know, let me know. I'd be glad to call.
And what is this committee going to do?
They're just there for input, uh, based on this agenda as we go through it. If they've got their own, you know, from the community, we've been trying to find people removed from the school.
Oh.
Feedback from them if they weren't without.
She wasn't here last week.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you just wasn't listening to us. It's like, haven't we talked about this?
We had it. For this strategic, Kelly, Carl, for this strategic plan, the state people wanted to have like thirty people. Okay. So we, you know, of course, all of us in the administration and then I don't know.
Site council, the, um, what's the other group, school groups?
Site council, steering committee.
Steering committee.
So, do you want some more names or?
Um, yeah, I think, do you not, do you think we probably should? I, I didn't know, that's why, we've got eight for sure.
Sure.
We was trying to get ten. We've got three that'll be there one night, but not, uh, not the second night. So.
You think it's going to close to thirty, count the other groups?
We was hoping to get thirty, but I don't know what the, I don't know.
He's getting the coffee in this list.
I can call everybody tomorrow and double check.
How about we, how about we do this? If, um, Jim would find out for sure on the school and then we'll put that with this. And then I will get out that we're needing three more names or whatever. And then you can get your ideas and all contact. We're getting out.
Might, might kind of look through the list. Are there any, uh, areas in the community that we're missing representing from?
Well, we tried.
Parents there for sure.
We tried to go east-west and we tried to, tried to do, you know, young, uh, people with young kids, people without kids that are, you know.
I was just thinking of somebody that, um, complains a lot about the parking lot at their, I mean, I don't know if that has anything to, to brag keep.
Well, he's somebody we could, you know.
I didn't know.
How many of these people are just hill city based? Because I was thinking, you know, our school, we could have kids coming from other communities. Could we ask leaders of other communities, Norman and Nikki and Bubba to come in?
Talk to them with the more.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we did have, uh, well, we thought, uh, Roseanne was one from that area that we, um, had asked. Let's do this. Let's just, let, let, let's find out how many we got. I will, uh, communicate out how many we need and you'd be thinking of the ideas, get them back to me. And then we'll, we'll kick them around and try to get some kind of order and get them asked so we can get our third, if that sounds okay.
Yep. Do we still have our original list? You called everybody on both, on all of our lists?
No, just the people that were on.
On both or?
Yeah, all three.
All three or on two. I called all of them. I'll get the list and then we'll all get cut up.
Okay.
Okay, um, is there, was there anything else specifically on the role on that?
No, no, just, um.
All right. The, uh, annual convention, I think, um, Mr. Jipal, um, Tommy, Kathy, Janet and I are all going, I think, um.
You and Janet are going, what? Y'all are going?
I think, yeah, but I think, uh, Tommy and Mr. Jipal are going down Thursday. And then.
They'll come down after the basketball game on Friday.
Yeah.
What was the date on that again?
Six through eight.
Six through the.
Six through eight.
We're planning on going on the fifth. Just as a sign, the, the fourth and fifth is the trial with Mr. Moore, so.
Oh, wow. You'll go after the.
Hopefully that will not get carried over to the sixth, but.
That does.
But we don't, we're not supposed to go to that, are we? Or have any of us been?
If you get subpoenaed, you gang straight will.
Have you been?
You, I don't know that you have been, uh, you were on the list.
I don't know what it's, but I haven't been.
They're not going to do any good to subpoena me.
They haven't caught me yet.
They will.
You'll be a fish.
Probably.
But like all of us are just, some of us.
Did you not read, did you not get your?
Uh, I checked my email. Oh, wow. Sorry Nancy, I told you to check your email today.
Well, we've got to get you on board then.
Yeah, you really do.
Okay, uh, hopefully host the high school rodeo May tenth and eleventh. And then we need to add to that, other than town. But I think it went over really well last year with our moment.
Well, how are people here?
Yeah. Good, that's a really good food.
Get the restaurants to be open, to stay open, what do you do to do?
Yeah, and we need to put pressure on to leave. I mean, not from just community.
I don't know, no way.
Well, I mean, really, the community should, I mean, we've got a lot of people in town, you know, might as well spend their money here.
Well, we got good facilities to put it on too, rather than just use them once a year and then figure that we can.
Okay, uh, transportation report?
I don't really have any. I, uh, heard you say something about the parking lot. I talked to Dan Zahn the other day and I got a phone number from a guy that, remember he said he had a friend that worked on the, that parking lot out in front of the high schools?
Yes.
I finally got a phone number. I need to call him and see if he'd come down, but Dan never did call us.
I talked to Dan and he was pretty adamant about not wanting to go.
Right.
But Janet, did you not say something about city or somebody doing something?
Once, once the school did their part, then the city would come in and do their part on the street itself. But this is not the time to be here to do that.
Well, no, but, but we need to, we can't just decide to not do it.
We don't want to do it ourselves now.
But it's a big enough project, we're going to have to.
Yeah.
So you mean the city, do their part, you mean like, uh, replace the sidewalk and the curb limits all busted out there?
I don't think that's ours. The street picks the street so it's more.
So it's such a drop-off?
Right. There's a lot of stuff on that street. A lot.
Yeah, that whole thing.
A mess. I mean, that's just something Dennis had said. I mean, I'll talk to him more about it tomorrow, but.
So do you mean like call this guy and have him come give us a look at it or?
I'd want to.
A look see?
Call him and see if they'll come.
Yeah, because that'll give us an idea of the scope.
There's a hole right out in front of it.
Yeah.
If we don't, next thing we go, put something in that hole.
Cars are going to disappear.
That throws the kids out of the seats when we hit it with the cars.
Or somebody step in and walk into a, get in a yard. You can't, anybody can see and it, yeah, it's.
There's several places that we can do that.
Okay, um, building, uh, principals reports.
I have a little bit. Um, Wednesday, we host the regional K conference. Um, there will be sixteen schools attending that conference. It's a kind of a, uh, their leadership team will be coming. And Cheryl from the Activities Association is the K's director, so she'll be here. And then she'd also bring in a featured speaker. Uh, the athletic banquet or reception is tonight at six-thirty. Uh, junior high basketball, as we all know, is off and running. And then the high school basketball season and wrestling season officially start next Monday, the eighteenth. And, uh, we'll be hosting a red cross, Red Cross Bloodmobile on Wednesday, December fourth. They're at the high school and that'll run from eight-thirty to two-thirty in the gym.
When's the first game?
High school, December sixth.
When we have to, yeah.
And wrestling is December fifth, that Thursday.
You know, that's why we're driving down after the ballgame.
I don't miss very many basketball games. I don't miss very many basketball games.
Well, we're not.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
That's very cool.
I'm sure you're all aware, we have the annual spook parade, and that's always exciting.
Yes, it is.
So, uh, got some nice pictures in the paper, that was good. And then today, we did a short, uh, Veterans Day recognition in the gym, all the kids in there. Uh, announcements, short program in the, uh, place of allegiance in the gym with everybody.
Cool.
And, uh, so. That's all I have.
Board members?
We had, when I went up to Oakley, we had a hookup with, uh, uh, attorneys for the lawsuit against the state, cause they're not funding us. And it was kind of interesting, they seemed to think we're in the driver's seat, but I could see, they said that, um, I don't, I don't know what the terminology, I don't remember what the terminology was in it, but they were saying that the schools don't have the right to bring this lawsuit in for the child, because they're not that child's guardian. There's a chance this whole thing could get, you know, kicked out. If the, but they were saying that the Supreme Court, was it two or three of the justices were on there when they originally ruled that the state didn't provide enough funding? And they, from what I'm understanding is, the the state, they told the state they had to do, had to fund it, and then they dropped the lawsuit. And the state didn't follow through with it, so now those judges are upset, so there may be something that come out of this, but it's, you know, like everything, it's gonna be delayed. But they seem to think that that we do still have a chance. I don't know what they're gonna determine in that. How, how they're gonna fund us, but it was, it was interesting to listen to the attorney talk, I guess.
That's never been said before.
No, but, I mean, her point of view, but it, of course, it's, you know, geared to the schools and not, I'm sure the other side's saying the same thing. But, it was kind of interesting.
Interesting to feel, whatever it is, I don't get a feeling.
Exactly. But I don't know where it's gonna go. If that's Supreme Court, I don't know where you're gonna feel it, too.
I don't think there is.
It's just gonna, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Do you have a suitcase or suitcase?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just an update with, uh, Mr. Moore. This Friday, you have the pre-trial hearing at ten o'clock, and mediation at one o'clock. Our board attorney would like to meet with all the board members on Friday, if possible, to visit with you about the, uh, issues, so, uh.
And that'll be afternoon?
Afternoon.
After the mediation?
After the mediation. Afternoon or evening, he prefers, so I don't know. We, unless you wanna call a special team, um, you know, we scheduled, we can't have more than three of you there at one time. For him to visit with you. So I don't know if you have any idea when he might be available.
I think I can do any, anytime.
You can just call him in, I don't have to go straight.
I don't know. How long is he thinking of?
Uh, I don't, I don't know. I would guess two to fifteen minutes.
Three o'clock?
Should think.
Three o'clock break?
Well, yours is gonna be ten, you don't know how long it'll take at mediation, uh, do you?
Well, it starts at one, you know, but I don't know for sure. I would guess it'll be over by three.
So we could all do it, but just not at the same time?
Right.
But see, I think, does that include the lawn and, uh?
Who wants to visit with the lawn and Bruce also?
Okay, so we'd have to do it in three shifts, right?
Well, the lawn and Bruce are no longer on the board, so we can have three board members and.
One of them.
That's a good point.
I can do it later.
I can, too.
Okay, so you find out when?
How many, how many can come at, uh, three-thirty?
I'll just.
I can come anytime.
Okay.
I prefer early than late.
Me, too.
So if Chris wants.
Do Chris and Susan need to come?
No, Chris, Chris and Susan.
You didn't get subpoenaed, or you didn't, your name's not on that.
Nobody, I don't think anybody's been subpoenaed yet.
No.
But this, this board wouldn't be, though, would they?
No, those two.
Those two wouldn't be.
Right. So you want me to just call everybody and?
Yeah.
I can go at any time.
Three-thirty, four o'clock, that works for most everybody?
The question, though, in reading that, are we talking about the dismissal, or the fact that, the discrimination thing, or both?
Yeah, the discrimination, uh, charge is not included in this, that's a separate deal.
But, and that's going, that's to be determined later? So this is just the?
This is the termination.
Termination, okay. Right, cause they, they started talking about the whole.
Right.
Is that an email?
Huh?
Each, each, uh, each attorney has to present a pre-trial, I can't remember the name of it, but a pre-trial motion of some kind. And they list in there who they expect to call. Not everybody that they list may get subpoenaed to attend the trial.
Says.
So that's, that's why you guys are listed, so that's why he wants to visit with everybody.
Names and addresses of witnesses who will be called. Now, granted, they missed most of them, but they do have that many names.
Oh, my. Here's.
So, as everybody that was involved, I mean, that's not even a.
No.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just, uh, put something together and call you and see if that works for you, and get it figured out.
Alright.
And then, as I mentioned, the trial's set for the fourth and fifth of December, so just giving a heads up, if you do get subpoenaed.
When would we most likely receive those, if we're, wouldn't they be coming anytime?
No, you might get it the day before, I don't.
Really?
Yeah.
You never know for sure.
He's famous for that. He's monkey porn. That's his dad.
Oh, great.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's amazing that you didn't even know that was gonna happen.
Oh, Carl.
Well, it will be good for our attorney to visit with everybody, so that.
Oh, my.
You know, cause he has a lot of chances to talk to us.
Alright, anything else on that?
No, not necessarily, I have any questions. Uh, just a little bit of legislative stuff that's going on here.
Good or bad?
Well.
Perception, no. It's all about perception.
What, oh?
It's all about perception.
We're excited, Roland?
A couple of things. The first thing, uh, I printed off for you is, uh, USA P's legislative update. And this last, uh, couple of days, they convened a special committee on education. And those are kind of the notes from that, uh, that was, that was talked about. Interesting to note that no school or KSDE representative was given an opportunity to address the committee. And just some of the misleading information that you may have heard of, or that's out there, uh, on page two there, the next to the bottom paragraph. When they talk about seven point one percent, the number of teachers, uh, students increased by seven point one percent, the number of teachers increased by sixteen point four. And then administrators and other staff increased by thirty-six percent. The fact of the matter is, is that the, uh, the number of students increased by thirty thousand students. The number of extra staff increased by eighteen hundred, so that's about a seventeen to one ratio, uh, when you talk about real numbers. Also, another incorrect fact is that the actual number of administrators actually decreased, did not increase. So, that's kind of a, a ploy that, uh, these groups do, is they always wanna tack administrators on there, because as we all know, we're all paid and under work, so. That's always a eye catcher. So, you know, the, uh, the numbers that are being thrown around, you know, when you talk percentages, you gotta really look at how many numbers it actually is. So, uh, the, uh, Kansas Policy Institute and the, um, National Ed, uh, what is the other one? The Foundation that, that was presenting, um, they're both anti-public education, so that's kind of who they listen to. Um, I thought it was interesting and comp, and good that several, at the very top of the page, the comment was several of the committee members, including Ralph Osmeier, challenged the, the Freedom Foundation findings, and called for real data behind the Foundation's conclusions, which they don't really have any. So I, I guess that's good that they were, some of them were questioning what they were being told, so. And really, the truth of the matter is, as Kathy mentioned, if the lawsuit comes out in favor of school districts and kids, uh, there's been a lot of talk from legislators that this is like throwing down the gauntlet, and they're gonna push for constitutional amendments, and, you know, really do it to us after that, so, um, just so you're aware. And then the other article that I gave you, uh, was forwarded to me from Mr. Man up at Norton, and that's just a, uh, a talking about US education crisis, and our issue is, is poverty. And that's the reason why we keep hiring more paras, we keep hiring more teacher aides, is to help these kids that are behind, and it's, it's been shown over and over again about every study that's been done, that poverty is a, is a big cause of educational delay. So, when you look at the number of additional staff that's been hired, those are, those are people that are working with kids, paras, teacher aides, those kinds of things, so, uh, it can make it sound a lot worse than what it really is. A lot of school districts have forgone, is that a word? Forgone? Hiring more teachers, because they can hire more paras or aides at a lot less cost, so you can get more hands-on in the building and in the classroom, although, you know, they're not quote-unquote professional people. A lot of these kids just be pulled out for, you know, thirty, forty minutes a day, and a little bit more one-on-one instruction, so. Yeah, that kind of gives you a little bit more of an idea, I think, of some of these numbers that you might see thrown around.
In the, uh, thing that we went through in Osbourn, that is not just a Kansas issue either, I mean, it's, everyone's facing the same thing.
Look at this map.
Yeah, I mean, it is, there's a lot of, almost every school district.
Wasn't that part of it, one of the things that they were saying was that they didn't think that the judges should be able to tell the legislature what to do.
Right.
That they were above the law. You know, they could, they could.
The legislature hasn't followed the law for a lot of years, with that, with the law actually is. So, you know, there, there's been a clash there forever, forever.
Huge power struggle.
That's all I have, just, if you have any questions.
Little questions, um, need to approve a donation?
Kay, I'll just tell you a little bit about this. Kay is, uh, trying to solicit donations to purchase some hardware for the preschool program. Uh, she's, I think they've, they've, uh, been donated, or have enough money now to purchase some iPads. And so she's wanting to open it up to allow people to donate to that, to be able, for them to be able to buy more iPads. So that's what that's for, hardware for preschool.
We just have to approve?
Approve, uh, the donations for that hardware project.
As a counter?
Well, it's just, I guess what I, what I'd like to see is just approve donations to the project, it's an ongoing project.
That, okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
She's only got one donation so far, but she's expecting others, so instead of coming back and approving each one, uh, you know, if, if the board wants to, to approve the project as a whole, and then we'll keep all the money separate as it comes in.
We'll make a motion to approve. There, so you can put your magic touch on it.
It's been moved and seconded, okay. Review the property insurance?
Uh, we have a request with the proposal there, uh, the board asked me to do for this year, our, uh, property insurance. Renewed February seventh, is that right? February fifth. And, uh, this is all the coverage we currently have, for the most part, uh, that would be typical in any, um, I guess, proposal that we may receive from a, a company that would be, uh, able to provide school insurance. We have a listing of, of buildings and current value. Uh, as we have on our policy, we have the equipment breakdown, talks about, you know, what the, uh, deductibles are on all of our equipment. We've got a listing of all of the, uh, mowers, snow blowers, anything like that, that we, that the district owns, general liability insurance. We have automobile insurance, listing our deductibles and all that stuff, with a complete listing of all the vehicles owned by the district. And then the crime insurance, uh, there as well, that's included in our current policy. And liability insurance, educator liability. And then excess liability insurance.
So how do we, uh, this is good, I like this, and then we can get this out?
This would go out to whoever would request it, I mean, uh, Colleen requested it, so I told her as soon as the board approved it, I would give her a copy of it. So they could start, and then the, uh, the, whoever was bidding would be, um, welcome to come present for the board in January, and then the board will need, need to make a decision on who you want.
Well, I think it's important that the locals have a chance, the ones that, that want to bid on, I think it's very important that we at least let them. Whether they can do it or not, we'll, we'll have to see, but I think, I like this.
Kind of the buildings that, that's the BPP lines, is that the stuff inside? The last couple.
Yeah, I think that's a content.
Yeah, building.
Building personal property?
Uh, listen.
Building property, the content.
Okay, I like that. Any other questions or on, on the proposal? Oh, yeah, we gotta.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved, it's been seconded, any discussion, all favor? Any opposed? Okay, um, additions to the agenda, um, to discuss the policy on, or lack of policy on showing, uh, movies, um.
I looked through the policy handbook, and I found, I didn't find anything that stipulated, uh, movies.
Okay, the question that Stan, do you wanna?
Well, I was just wondering if we had any.
Well, I was just wondering if we had any policy, we probably should make policy as to age-appropriate movies for kids, whether it be grade school, high school, whatever, just so we have something.
And as of right now, we have nothing.
I, I.
Is this for like when they show them like, happy, when they have parties or something?
Yeah, parties or happy at school anywhere.
Do they like, show that many anymore?
Oh, yeah, we, we show, well, the grade school, ours are, you know, we're all G, we don't do anything above G. So, and that's just a given, but I mean, I don't think it's bad to have a policy stipulating so that everybody knows and.
Can anybody give me a background on what's going on there?
Well, there was a, there was a movie at the high school, uh, the football team watched it, it was an R-rated movie. And there was a bunch of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, I mean, so I asked Mr. Hippel if we had policy on it, and he said he didn't think we had any policies, so I thought maybe we should come up with something.
Was this on their off time, or what, when was this?
Uh, it was half a day of school on Friday.
Just the football team watched it?
Yeah. Step Brothers.
So, does everyone, does everyone kinda agree that we should have something? I mean, I, it seems appropriate that we have some guidelines, but where do we go from?
Apparently common sense is a.
Well.
Play it out.
You know, that's.
I just, my, my thought on it was it's gonna be something that the kids are underage on, whether it be PG at the grade school or R at the high school, there ought to be a, a parent consent form or something, you know? Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, the next question would be, how do, do it, uh, do we have a resource for sample policies, or are we gonna have to just go from scratch?
Oh, I think I can come up with something. So, basically what you're saying, if I hear you right, any movie that's not rated G would need to have a parent consent.
PG.
Well, but if you have.
Well, that could depend on what age.
Yeah, like the high schoolers can watch PG thirteen.
I have a appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, like, if you're showing PG at the high school.
Rating, age appropriate.
Yeah, rating, age appropriate, yeah.
So, I think we probably just say no R period.
Or PG thirteen.
I mean, you know, if, if there was something like in English class, and they're wanting to watch a movie that wasn't something they were studying, and it was R, now that we could say something about, if all the kids got consent forms from their parents, I mean, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Well, 'cause you could have war movies that was.
Sure.
R, you know, that, that might be appropriate, but still are, but.
But if there's an educational reason behind it, then sending out a consent form explaining, I have this educational reason behind this movie, most parents are gonna say, sure, why not, you know, it's not a problem, but just a little bit.
So, you think you can come up with something on that?
Mm-hmm.
Hard.
And we can review it and, do you think they have any other input on that? Okay, um, next item is the tardy policy, um, reviewing it. I guess there's some question about Mr. Stein, when are students being notified as far as the tardy?
Some today of, because last, or this, last week, um, when I got back on Thursday, I ran the tardy policy, and we had some kids that were going to be going to some concerts, and they were told they couldn't go because they had too many tardies. So, they were told Thursday, because I was gone Monday when we generally run it. And, yeah, the, the list of students usually come in from the sponsors at an early of time that I can let them know, but Ms. Getz is still learning, and she turned those names in Thursday as well. So, once I got that list, that's when I started going through both lists, and, and I informed her of what students wouldn't be able to go and what students could go.
Were they supposed to go on that Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, so normally though, we, we have a set, like Mondays they.
Mondays the day that I run the failing list and the tardy list.
And those lists go out to sponsors and teachers and coaches?
The, the failing list does, the tardy list does not, because I just, I keep my notes on it and things like that. I mean, I, it's just a hard copy, it's not an emailed copy. So, the, the tardy list doesn't go out to, to faculty.
Okay, but when do you not, so, I guess the question that's come up is, when do they get notified? Say Monday that we got four kids that's in different things.
Right, if I have that, if I have the list of students that are going on an activity trip, or, or, I mean, if it's not athletics, I mean, if it's an activity, the, the sponsor's supposed to send a list to the office saying, I'm gonna be taking these students out of class on Thursday for this so-and-so activity. Uh, once I see that list, then I compare my list, and then I let them know, and I let the, the students know as well, that they will not be attending.
The issue on this one that we're talking about, you didn't have the list to notify.
Right, till Thursday.
That they couldn't go.
Right. I got the list Thursday, the tardy list Thursday, and I got the participation list on Thursday, when she came into the office.
It was just kind of a crazy deal on Thursday, happened this time.
Yes.
But how many tardies does it take for you not to get two?
Three. Once you, once you reach your third tardy, you start missing activities.
The kid knows they've got two.
I would assume they know, because I have, I mean, a lot of, a lot of students know, when they get their first one, they're like, oh, my gosh, I can only get one more. Can I tell them I'm a, I'm a generous guy and I give them two? On the third one is when we start, um, pulling activities from them.
They know.
Yeah.
And do you feel like the teachers are being pretty consistent on when they're giving you, I mean, there's no?
No, I, I haven't heard any from anybody, or, you know, any, any student come and say, well, that, that person doesn't get tardies, but this one does, I mean, that.
Okay. Do you think they also, do you think they have any other questions for Mr. Stein?
What do they have to do in ISS?
Work on homework that is brought to them for, uh, from the teachers. I send an email out to the teachers and say that so-and-so's gonna be in ISS, please send homework to the office for them to work on.
So, Ellen, just so I have it straight in my mind, uh, teachers at eight fifteen take roles, send the list of absentees to the office?
Yes, it's all done on computer.
Then if a kid comes in late?
They check in the office for first hour, but any hour after that, from second through seventh, the teacher just marks it. They mark the tardy, instead of sending them back, but just first hours when we.
Then they just send that to you then, or to the office?
Just, it go, no, it goes into Power School. They just log into Power Teacher and they can, I mean, just click on it, whether it's absent or a tardy or whatever.
Okay. Let's get over Larry, I think he's made it yet. Oh, first of all, is, are we okay with that, the tardy thing, we good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, wait room, uh, policy, Stan?
I just, I don't know, we, we've talked about it several times, and I, I know we have a policy that we're not supposed to have kids in there without supervision. Am I correct on that? There's, there's a lot of kids that are, I checked out a key from Mr. Stein, all this backup, so we could take Everett out there to lift, and we go with him, so we're always there. So, we've been there quite a bit. There's a lot of kids that are coming out with a key that, but no, nobody, you know, we happen to be in there, so it works out, I guess, in that regard, but, uh, like.
They're probably there when you're not also.
Yeah, 'cause we're only there three days a week. But they're bringing a key from a teacher to let themselves in to lift. Uh, I know that before we checked out a key from Mr. Stein, this is the reason we did it, Everett's wanting to lift mainly for track, so, and he asked, he wanted to start lifting after football practice, and he asked, can I lift after football practice? Yeah, well, they prop the door open for him. Uh, and so he went in and lifted it by himself, he said, well, we can't do that anymore, we'll check the key out, and we'll go with you. Well, and then we, since we'd like to say, well, since we've been up there, we've noticed that, so I just, I think we need to, I don't know, for liability purposes, we need to crack down on that or something, I don't, I, I just feel like that's a pretty dangerous place for a couple of kids to be by themselves, but.
I agree.
I would have to review the policy, but I think we have one policy that says that keys are not to be given to kids. Teachers are to use their own keys and not give them out to anybody else.
Anyone, right?
My understanding, I'd have to go back and look for sure.
What's that?
It's happening at the junior high gym, too.
Oh.
Their, right, parents are giving keys to kids in about fourteen hours, so go out and shoot up at them.
Oh, you need a goal?
Okay, here.
But that's the matter.
Let's stay on track. Okay, on the, the, uh, on the wait room, Mr. Stein, what, are you seeing this, or what's?
No, this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay, um.
I mean, the, the, I mean, Stan and I have, I mean, we visited when he came in to check out the key about lifting after practice and then, uh, going in.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, we need to have available, that there should be adults in there, I mean, that's, don't you agree?
Oh, I agree with that, I agree with that.
Um.
Is there, does anybody over eighteen qualifies as an adult?
And that was the issue last time.
I mean, the seniors, if they're eighteen, can anyone there by themselves?
I, if I remember right, when we reviewed it, it was anybody over eighteen.
Was there anybody over eighteen?
Uh, not, not the, not Thursday, they weren't eighteen, but there has been, uh, I assume, I don't, I don't know who's eighteen and who's not, but I.
That's what I wondered if there was.
But they're still getting kicked.
Uh, well, the one day it was, is Shane Jones, and I think he's eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I don't know.
He just turned eighteen.
But I, I figured he might be, he's a senior, but.
But really, a wait room is a bad place for anybody to be there alone, I mean, a lot of things bad can happen there.
Eighteen or not, though, the keys are, the teachers are the ones with the keys, and they're not to give the keys out to anyone at all, or especially kids or students, so I mean, I think that's one of the issues, is whoever, whichever teacher's giving the keys out, they need to agree to go with that kid and do with that kid to supervise.
And I assume it's locked all the time? I, yeah, it's always locked for me going in.
Well, I don't have a problem with the parent and the key thing, I mean, it needs to be you guys. If a parent's willing to take their kid up there, I don't think that we should deny them that.
The whole, the whole thing is as though the parent checks the key out so that you know who's in there.
Right.
Well, they're responsible then for whatever.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that's exactly right, well, then basically they're taking on the responsibility.
But then what do we do if they don't go with their kid? I mean, just say, I don't, you will, I know, but I mean, if I check out a kid, then.
Then we never check the key out to you again?
Do we take it back from them and say, we thought your kid was there?
If Mr. Stein was out there and Everett was in there by himself with the key I checked out, I'd expect him to want it back, you know, and I would give it back.
That, that's what I meant, we need to, you know, one and done, kinda.
Well, and I don't.
It's very dangerous.
But I just don't think that anybody over eighteen should be in there with, and be responsible for somebody else's kid either. You know, you're saying if, if anybody, you know, yeah.
Like Shane, for instance, and another sixteen-year-old.
What does it specifically say? Can we review that for next time, next meeting? I mean, so that we know what it says, I guess. I mean, it'd be good for us to review it anyway.
One of the reasons why we changed a lot of the locks is because keys were floating around so bad that we changed so many of the locks.
Okay, any other comment on that?
Do you have that policy, or you, will it take time to find it, or?
Yeah, I, I, um, but, I, I can't, just could put my hand out right now.
Maybe we could, uh, get that out to everyone.
Yeah, I can email it out to everybody, so you can see where it is for the next meeting.
Okay, well, our third item arrived.
Arrived?
Arrived. Sorry for being tardy, I left at town at six o'clock this morning for meeting in Manhattan and just got back. I just wanted to come and share our two national finalists plaques that we got to national convention a few weeks ago. Um, one of them's for state winning Ag Issues team, they went and competed, the other one is for Model Innovation and Student Development, um, finalist plaque, and also to thank you guys for your support. Of our trip to national convention, we brought you souvenirs from Louisville. Louisville Slugger mini bats with F A.
Don't hand them out till we're done.
Should I keep them back? I guess I should give them to each other?
Nancy?
No, Nancy doesn't give one.
And, and what, was there specific groups involved in each of these, or what?
Um, the Ag Issues was the, uh, six girls that won state last year presenting on wind energy.
Okay.
And the Model of Innovation and Student Development was, um, for our selection of our murder mystery that we did last year. Um, and student development, promoting healthy lifestyles to critical thinking, um, safe environment, um, of activities. We were selected for that at the national level, and then Tate and Cordell went and presented on that at national convention.
Good, awesome.
Very nice of Larry to you and his teams.
Uh, kids did it all, so, Mr. Wolf, did everybody get one?
I might just start bringing this.
I'll do a dabbing.
Thank you. Kids did great job, I'm very proud of them already.
Very impressive. Thank you very much, and like I said, thank you again for your support and continued support in our program with kids and their success, without you guys being impossible, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Videos, I don't think that you have.
Yes, that was mine, um, I don't know if, if, what, if there's any legality issues about having a private video camera in here, but if we are gonna do it, and if everybody was okay with it, I would like to suggest that we also have a school, our own video camera in here. That not, I don't trust you guys or anything, if you know, but I don't, if somebody else was to come in here and could, excuse me, copy, crop, edit, take things completely out of context, I think we ought to have our own record to be able to dispute any. And, you know, to make it public, we could put it on the school channel or on, you know, our website or something like that, I don't, I don't have, I wanna, to be clear, I don't have a problem being, being taped or.
Well, even if we didn't put it out there, the idea of having, you know, because in today's world, you know, the right person gets a hold, it's hard to tell them if you can do it. And if we, even if we didn't put it out there, if we was able to, could we do that, just ha, keep a?
Probably.
I mean, what?
I'm sure we can do it.
This is like the second time.
Yep.
And what's the purpose?
I think mainly, I don't know, I want to speak to Mary, this is her deal, but she gets asked all the time, what's going on in school meetings, and so she asks me, and I say, well, I can't tell you this or that, so she decided, well, she's just gonna film it, and whoever wanted to watch it could, that way she doesn't have to answer a lot of questions or, you know, that kind of stuff.
No, I have no problem with it all. I, I would like to have a backup, you know, to, for the school to be, you know, in control of it, like I said, put it on our, if, if we choose to, put it on the school channel and on our website, or whatever we wanna do with it. But more importantly, to disprove, you know.
If somebody took it, cropped it or.
Yes, or, you know, like if I say, I don't want anybody thinking I hate Carl, and all that gets out there is I hate Carl.
We're being secret, Tony.
That may not. That's never been secret.
Crop them.
That, that's, that's all I wanna, I wanna bring up, is, is if we could, you know, for that, you gotta, we gotta let everybody else, you know, anybody that wants to come in here and do that, it couldn't fall into the wrong hands, and people with ill intentions could.
Really get after it.
Manipulate it, that's a way.
On that point, I mean, Kay's always had theirs, I know that they're a big, they're a big.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I'm in favor of going to a lot of work and get it out there.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
But I think, I think, I think you're exactly right, I mean. But I think, I think, I think you're exactly right, I mean, in today's world, everything that could be done, it would be nice to just have it if we had, if we needed it, so.
No, I don't, I don't think about putting it out there. It's a public meeting, they can come, they can sit here and listen, if they, if it's that big of a deal, they can come in here and.
That, that's right, and that, and that's, you know, if people, anyone can come in here and, and watch the board meeting if they really wanna know.
But I wanna disagree a little bit, some people can't make it. They, some people would like access to it, I'm not saying, you know, I don't know, that they're just, I do see that some people like, it might be beneficial to.
Well, there's probably a few that maybe, but, you know, a lot of it would be just an inconvenience as well, you know.
Yeah.
I think more, I, I'm, I think the more information, the more people know, the better off, I mean, I think it's good for everything, you know?
No, I do, but.
That's just my take.
I don't have a problem with everybody knowing, that's why it's an open meeting. But to go out of our way, you know, if we had a big issue that was a. What do I wanna say, divisive in the community, I think it would be a good idea to put it out there.
What is the only time to get, have the, get it somewhere every, every meeting, right?
Right, 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 right.
I think, you know, our, our minutes are in the paper too, right now.
Do you have any?
I just wanted to say, I'll check with Scott and talk to Kim Pfeifer about what we'd need to do to put it on the TV station. I mean, if we're taping it, I don't think it'd be a big deal, I don't know, I need to check with her about what the procedure is, to put it on there.
I tried to watch the last one, and I made it about five minutes long. That's all I can do is say, wait, can hear that when I watch it all.
In your easy chair.
Oh, that hurts. Any, any other comments on the, Mr. Trickle, you'll check that out?
Mm-hmm.
And we can discuss that further. Okay, um, executive session? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we better, we'll go ahead and, just go ahead and, let's do that, break for.
Your student first.
But then we can't.
Then you can't what?
I'm thinking, well, at least you guys do last meeting, can't talk super.
No, just relax and.
He probably wants to go to the awards thing or the, whatever.
Mr. Stein probably does. So, yes.
I'm not gonna skip some of this thing, I'm. See y'all later.
How are you doing? How long are you down?
I was bad for a week straight. You know, I didn't have to get a flu shot, but it was too late, I got the flu instead.
I'm gonna make it now.
Did you get your flu shot?
Nope, I'm gonna have that.
I'll let people decide if the minutes are complete, I'll let them decide that for themselves.
Can I sign on, unwrap on that?
What?
Wanna unwrap on that?
It's pretty cool.
Just keep it wrapped.
Nice. My brother Sean lives in Parkville, Tennessee, Chicago, Kentucky, and he went to the Slugger Packery, he bought me and three boys one, he's got names on it and stuff.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So did, can they, they'll just do that?
Personalize it, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That is cool.
It said, it had my name, it said proud father of three, and then he bought me a, a real, you know, a big one, and then the boys have one that's, that's maybe about this big, sort of bigger than this one.
Probably a neat two.
Oh, you do?
Can I say?
Probably a neat two.
Yeah, he said it was really neat. You been there too?
I don't get out.
It doesn't take, you can drive down there, it doesn't take very long.
Who said they don't get out much, you?
Yeah.
Since when?
Well, yeah.
I need, before I forget. Why'd you do that? Don't let me forget, I need books and stuff.
Or no, not mine.
Or just give it to me or something.
Eight, three, nine, two.
Is it good movie?
Yes.
It is, that's what I heard.
Very good movie.
Did you like the movie? Which one?
The Phyllis one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Phyllis one.
That's a good movie.
But they're saying people are mad because it isn't really tru-, I mean, they're making him out to be way braver than he was and.
Oh, really?
It's a good movie, isn't it?
Some of the crew, Timber.
Really enjoy a nice movie without, without people.
They said Tom Hanks went and talked to him to try, and said, it's not gonna be exactly like what happened, but I'd like to get your input.
Well, and he's pretty good about researching his, you know, doing what it is, make it believable.
I did wish they would've showed a picture of him, of the head.
Yeah, like.
Oh, the real guy?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I was like, is Tommy, Beck, me, Shelby?
Well, I didn't see you.
Yeah.
I seen.
Are they holding it over for another week?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll get.
I'd be worth going, I'd go see it again.
Yeah.
I know the corner was on the edge of her seat all the time.
So is my niece Naya.
She was there?
Naya was clear on the end by dawn.
Weekend's only decent, another ten miles.
Oh, yeah, you get, you get done before.
So is this freeze gonna allow you to get in there and get all that stuff?
Except for what I like today.
Didn't rain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's off.
That's Thursday, Friday.
I forgot to warn you.
Yeah, we had to take that out.
Still, and again, they said Tuesday, then we said.
Blame it on the co-op, 'cause they didn't wanna be open today, 'cause today's Tuesday, so they probably ordered in this weather.
Daryl was there, I don't.
Was skeleton crew.
Nice and co-op to honor our veterans.
What's that?
I said, it's nice and co-op to honor our veterans.
Yeah, when we come in.
Well, the whole reason is 'cause they don't get Fourth of July off.
Who's, uh, from the area still in the football class?
Hoxey one, Osbron's new one.
Plainfield still?
No, this, Carl Lacrosse, the other thing.
Oakley's still home.
This is like Lacrosse's third year, fourth year in a row, isn't it?
Smith Centered, isn't it?
And who beat by Scott City? It was actually close, I guess, but. Phillipsburg got in a couple of years when they have, they're gonna be awesome. Listen to the Osborne and the Hoxey. They're one pretty useful.
Yep, that's what I heard, but Hoxey's fast, I mean. Yeah.
Osborne's quarterback was twelve for twelve from his two hundred yards. I mean, I knew when we played, they had, they were a good passing team, pretty good.
And they're, both them teams are pretty well round, I mean, they've got some size and they've got some speed and.
I don't really think I know who, who must be pretty good now.
All I know is, uh, he's leader.
Who?
Uh.
He'll take those.
Yeah, I might do, I think his name.
Where's he go?
He got in a scrap with the volleyball thing, that's what I had, what somebody told me.
Mr. Hickel, what do you hear on Mr. Chalfant?
Oh, yeah.
The latest news that I've heard is that he was, uh, had some feeling in his arms, but wasn't even moving yet, but they're still a little hopeful. They think when the swelling goes down, he'll start to move back.
Awesome.
So, he's got a lot of swelling right now.
Kind of a wedding game now.
Yeah, just have to wait and see.
They're so positive on it.
Yeah, they've, uh, from what his brother said.
Is he kinda keeping in contact, him or Joni keeping in contact with you?
Um, the last email that I got was, I can't remember even who it was from, if they had talked to his brother, and so they were sending it out to everybody. That was yesterday, I think.
Somebody said that it, there was no obvious sign of the spinal column being.
I think, uh, it said that the doctors are all pretty positive and, and hopeful, but you never know for sure, but.
No, no cord damage, I think, or whatever.
Yeah.
That means possibly his legs too could come back also?
Well, I think there is a lot of swelling, a lot of pressure right now. It's gonna take, I don't know how long for that to, so.
And he's still in ICU? Yeah. But, and who's the? The good part is, he's a very strong man, and he's an in shape man, he still works out, fights day, every day. That's a plus.
Yeah, did they ever figure out how long he'd actually, was it when he's, when he's going in or when he's getting out?
Getting out.
Getting out, they figured that out, they last found you, they didn't even know that, he could.
About four hours.
Cause they assumed.
What I was told.
Well, I didn't know, they said, they didn't know if it was getting in, it could've been nine hours.
No, I think it was coming out, something about, I don't know, his stand broke or slipped or something. Fifteen feet below earth.
It must've been.
He's already.
Surely got turned on, right?
There was a broken limb underneath him, the finger stand out the day.
Yeah, at first.
And it's what people think, is it was freshly broken, like he landed on that?
I wonder, how much land it had, he turned, that'd be.
And it had, might've actually softened his fall.
Yeah.
Six or seven feet to the limb and then six or seven feet. Fifteen straight down.
And do you have any problems finding a substitute that short notice or?
I actually found a gal, uh, she lives between here and Hoxey, uh, I can't remember.
Tess, Tasco?
Uh, yeah, Tasco.
Is it Tasco? What is, no, it's up.
She caught Kobe for a while.
She's a lady that does the.
Set some beers, one.
Paints and horses up.
Did they get the, uh, stuff in the kiln or the firing thing for her now?
I don't know, I didn't know.
I think Kristi had that over before. I think Kristi had that over before.
Well, they called somebody that knew, that knew.
Don't get me wrong, my daughter was very upset about what happened, and the, her second thing was, they just put her, her, uh, face in her that she's been so proud of and.
Well, my guess is Mr. Chalfant's laying there worried about his kids knowing him, probably. And Joni's still there, correct?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Yeah.
But he is alert now, I think, that was my key.
He didn't say, call everybody, just go home and get some rest.
Steve did that real well too, you guys all need to go home.
What I meant to say was, you guys need to go home so I can get something.
Yeah. He's trying to be nice.
I could put their eyes on me.
Have we met the representative, our representation office? Have we met the person that's gonna be talking to you Friday?
Well, where are they gonna, for mediation?
What does mediation mean this week?
Come to some sort of agreement without going to court?
We're asking for money.
Those are good.
I went to mediation with, we had something.
Does it work, tell me?
Uh, no, it didn't, no, I don't think so.
I didn't get any numbers.
We were in there for eighteen hours.
Yeah, that's, that's what I keep thinking about.
We are, we're just.
Key's wet.
I've got my.
Key's wet.
Thank you though.
We got right back to where we were started.
Yeah, who the hell is that? My boss is pretty hard headed, and the lady we're, she's pretty hard headed too.
But that's why you're there.
Yeah.
So it's a mediator and a lawyer and a liar. His lawyer's gonna want money and our lawyer's gonna think we're not having.
Yeah, and then the mediators wants money too.
A lot of times they do, they're in their own two separate rooms, and the mediator just goes back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, this is what they want, this is what they want, this is what they want. We'll be there on this, won't be there on that.
Just give them these. Well, I don't think, in any way, shape or form.
Okay.
You back to your session?
Yeah.
Any, uh, something else?
We're supposed to, motion to adjourn, I'll move.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, wait till Nancy gets back.
What?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who moved it?
Kathy, moved second by ten, all over. There we go. Thanks, everybody.